Okay, I've called to order the work session for Wednesday, November the 2nd. And I'd ask everyone to indulge me and just let's have a moment of silence for the poor people out in California and what they're going for. The first item on the agenda tonight is a discussion on the mayoral veto of ordinance number 1848, an ordinance to approve the revelation, the revitalization overlay area, number one conceptual plan for the Laurel Shopping Center development with conditions and providing for an effective date. I have placed this on the agenda after giving you all enough time to think about the mayor's response and what we want to do, if anything. Does the council or anyone want to have a say on what the mayor or veto states at this Seeing none, the veto will stay as the mayor has demanded. Number two, resolution number 1115, a resolution concerning Anderson's Corner Tax Increment Financing District, a designation and creation of a special fund, et cetera. A resolution adopted pursuant to section 12-201 et sec of the Economic Development Article and of the Ennotated Code of the State of Maryland, in quotes, "the act," in anticipation of issuance of the mayor and city council of Laurel, in brackets, "the city," of its special obligation bonds providing for designation and contiguous properties in the city of Laurel generally bonded by, bounded by Van Duzen Road in the northwest Conti Road and the northeast and proposed extension of Conti Road that will lie within the northwest of the existing Virginia Manor Court to the southeast and the Contair Drive to the southwest, in quote, I mean in brackets, "the district," for the purpose of the act creating a special fund pursuant to the act, providing for the deposit of unused monies in such special fund, pledging that the city will allocate and divide property taxes on real property within the district so that certain portions of the real property tax, in brackets, "the tax increment," will be allocated and paid into a special fund and providing for the funding and determining matters in connection therewith. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dory.
Bob Dory, Miles in Stockbridge Bond Council. This is the resolution which would create the Tax Increment Financing District out at Anderson's Corner, which will serve as the basis for a split of the taxes on the properties out there so that the existing taxes and 40% of any increase in taxes would come to the city, but 60% of the taxes would go to pay tax increment financing bonds to be authorized by the ordinance that's coming up later. And the, the purpose of the, the bonds to be issued pursuant to the ordinance, I'll put them all together, up to $4.2 million to be used to finance the acquisition of land for a public park and to finance a portion of the cost of a sewer extension and enlargement out in that area to serve the, two of the properties in the district owned by Ribera Anderson's Corner and by Avalon Laurel, which their properties are the ones who are going to pay the tax to support the debt. The, the bonds will be for a maximum of 30 years for a maximum interest rate of 8%, all subject to being finally determined, final amount of the bonds and those other details being determined by the mayor, assuming that the, that the council includes this legislation.
Bob, before, for anybody that may be watching, let's remind people what this increment is for, the tax, it's for public?
It is for public improvements, the park, the sewer extension. And the tax increment is basically the increase in taxes resulting from the development, which the city is encouraging by making these public improvements. The, the tax increment is that increase, as I said, the tax increment under the legislation is going to be 60% used to pay off the tax increment bonds and 40% comes to the city to cover ongoing costs of the city as you have always required. The, the bonds are expected to be sold to a, an affiliate or member of the Ribera Anderson's Corner of, I guess, Bob DePietro and Eric DeVito are here representing the developer and I'll let them talk as if they have any comments about how that would be done, but that's our understanding at this point and the, the details of the bonds then would be negotiated with them.
As bond counsel, you're satisfied?
As bond counsel, this thing works, it's, it fits well within the statute and the purposes for which the money would be spent are clearly authorized.
Thank you, Mr. Dory. Does the council have any questions at all?
Mr. President, I do have one really quick one. In looking through this resolution, I just want to direct us to page nine, section nine. $4.2 million, is that the maximum?
That is the maximum amount, the current projections that are in the actual application that was furnished to the city is something in the order of $3.6 million.
Okay.
And we'll make sure that the costs are.
We did that on the last one, I thought, up to.
That's what I brought to attention, right?
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Les?
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, I'm, I'm an advocate for, you can sit down. Please sit down. As you know, I'm an advocate for TIF. It improves property within the city, it increases taxes, it pays dividends in, in future years. In this case, we're actually going to add a park. We're also going to increase, increase, increase the availability of utilities by extending the sewer line and so on. As the mayor has pointed out, and we've had to, every time this comes up, there's a misconception by our constituents that we're giving something away. And I will only point out to add to what the mayor said, we don't have anything to give away. We're going to get, the citizens are going to benefit, and that's important. And, and along with what Mr. Smalls said, that's the maximum amount we think, and the 8% is actually the maximum amount we believe too. Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. DePietro, you have anything to add?
I wish you had a question.
Anybody? Mr. Querry? I didn't see you asking me.
Mr. Dory, could you just explain for everyone's edification in that the special funds isn't something that's created on the city level budget?
Excuse me?
The special funds part, if you will, how that's created and what goes into it?
Yeah, the special fund is created and actually in this instance is probably going to be held by the Director of Finance. Into it goes all of the tax increment, 40% of it comes out and you allocate it in your budget, and the other 60% stays in there to pay the debt service on the bonds.
Coming from?
Coming from the increase in taxes, but only from the increase.
Not from the taxpayers, it's coming from this property?
It comes from these properties that are within the district and the taxes that they pay are allocated and a portion of them.
Go into the special fund.
All of them go into the special fund, but a portion of them stay in there, the rest comes out to the city.
Thank you very much.
Mayor? I just want to remind everybody, bond counsel and attorney fees are also part of this as well, that they pick up.
Mr. Les, you have something follow up? Anyone else? Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Mr. DePietro, I'm glad you got the memo on the address tonight. This will be on the agenda for Monday, December the 14th, council meeting at 7:00 PM here in council chambers. Item number three, this is ordinance number 1856, an ordinance concerning Anderson's Corner's Tax Increment Financing Special Obligation Bonds, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of Laurel, in brackets, "the city," pursuant to and in accordance with section 12-201 et sec of the Economic Development Article, an Ennotated Code of the State of Maryland, in brackets, "the act," authorizing empowering the city to issue up to $4.2 million of its obligations, or its special obligation bonds and determining a maximum interest rate and maximum maturity date in order to finance and/or reimburse, one, the cost of, A, acquisition of the certain real property in Anderson's Corner Development District for use as a city park, and B, construction of certain public infrastructure improvements relating to Anderson's Corner Development District, and two, other costs permitted under the act, providing that such bonds and interests theron shall never constitute a general obligation of the city of Laurel and/or pledge in full faith and credit, providing for further specifications, prescriptions, determinations, provisions for or approval of various other matters, details, documents, and procedures in connection with the authorization, issuance, security, sale, and payment of any such bonds, making certain legislative findings expressly providing that this ordinance shall not be subject to being petitioned or referendum and generally providing for the issuance of special obligation bonds in accordance with the act. Mr. Dury, again?
I guess I will simply say that my prior testimony was intended to cover this legislation and what you just read emphasizes the questions and comments which the council and the mayor have made.
Is no obligation of the city?
No obligation of the city.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the council? Mr. Querry? Okay. Anyone else? Thank you, sir. Mr. DePietro?
Very good.
Thank you, sir, appreciate you being here. This also will be on the agenda for Monday, December the 14th at 7:00 PM and for possible action. Item number four, ordinance amending various sections of Laurel City Code, chapter 17, Traffic, Article III, Stopping, Standing, Parking, Division One, Generally, and Division Three, Snow Aberrunances, and Chapter 17, Article VII, Schedules, to increase fines for certain traffic and parking offenses in the city of Laurel, and repealing and reenacting Laurel City Code, Section 17-100, violations and penalties from Article IV, Bicycles and Other Recreational Vehicles, to Article I, in general, in quotes, as Section 17-5, and increasing the fine for the first violation. And council, city council, this is up, the chief?
Mr. President, the purpose behind this legislation is that it has been in excess of 10 years that any changes, increases, or adjustments have been made in regards to parking fines for a first offense. So there was a, we went through the list, made some recommendations for some increases of fines to bring them more in line with the surrounding areas, and as a result of that, this legislation was drafted and proposed.
Okay.
And if you'd like, we can go through the entire list or we can just leave it as it is.
Not tonight.
Very good.
Thank you, chief. Any questions from the council? Mr. Les?
Let me, just a general question. Pass, pardon, remind you, they made provision years ago for the mayor and the administration to have, or to change some dollar revenue to save. Question I have.
Mike, get your, get your mic.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Since we have this fine attorney here, she's better looking than Bob Manzi, don't forget to remind him. But the question is, could we pass legislation that would defer this type of action to the mayor and administration to take with a periodic review by the city council?
Now that it's currently in the city code, you have to amend the code.
I understand that, for this time, for this time, but for future changes, could we do that, what I've just suggested?
I think, I think generally, your fines and penalties are to be enacted by ordinance of legislative body under what used to be 23A. It's a local government article now and I can't think of the exact section.
I did some research and that's what, I mean, I hear the mayor saying, no, we don't want to do that, but again.
Some places do it by resolution, they pull the, the fines out of the code and they do it as a, as a resolution generally done in conjunction with your budget.
Okay.
But I have never seen it taken out of the hands of the legislative body.
You've answered my question.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mike, I just want to make a comment. The only reason I say I think this should stay in council's hands, when we moved certain things out, it was mainly administratively, but we kept all the fines in, if you recall, so that there is a check and balance here and that the council has a say and represents the opinion of the community, quite frankly, but it was, anything that was a violation penalty, I think we kept in council's hands, it had to come before council.
I just a thought that came up when I saw this, thank you.
Any more from the council? Thank you all very much, thank you, chief. Be on our agenda.
Your CAC approved it as well.
The CAC approved it, I'm told, as well.
But your CAC, it's.
Yeah, I said CAC.
He forgot.
That shady guy on top of his head.
I said the CAC approved it as well.
Okay.
Pick everything apart. All right, item number five, consideration of recommendation to replace the playground equipment at Granville Gooty Park. Mr. Lottsky?
Yes, good evening, Mr. President, mayor and city council. Should have a memorandum before you dated November 30th, 2015, titled Playground Proposal Granville Gooty Park. The city Laurel recently received a grant of $250,000 from the Community Parks and Playground Program, and this is administered through the Maryland Department of Natural Resources. Her desire was to improve the aging playground at Gooty Park, this playground was installed, the current playground was installed in 1999, thank you, Mr. Les, for reminding me of that. We also are having some problems there with erosion in and around the playground area. We currently have a design for replacing the playground in hand, the play structure from Game Time and Cunningham Recreation enables us to ride and take advantage of the contract from U.S. Communities. U.S. Communities, as you may recall, is a program that's recognized and promoted by the National League of Cities, we've been a member of the U.S. Communities Program for a number of years now. And one of the categories that we're able to ride is playground equipment, they currently have a contract, Game Time does, through the city of Charlotte, North Carolina. We asked Mr. Manzi to verify the, the program, the, and the ability to ride the contract, he has done that and he has approved that we should be able to ride that contract. Mr. Frost is going to put a couple, a couple renderings up on the screens now for you to take a look at. This is the proposed new playground, we've got an area for the two to five-year-olds and the five to 12-year-olds. If you look to the right, we also are expanding the playground a little bit, that climbing structure to the right there is going to be something brand new, so the footprint of the current playground is going to be, is going to be a little bit larger with this new proposed playground. You'll notice it will be the poured rubber instead of the wood mulch that we currently have there. And this, this area, as you know, is probably one of our most used, used parks, a lot of people come down, use the playground while they're running a picnic pavilion or walk in the park with their kids, and so we're, we're excited about being able to replace it with something really nice. As I said, the proposal from Cunningham Recreation and Game Time is for $234,982.32. You may recall that we were dealing with West Recreation for a long time with the Game Time product, and Mr. West is retired, and Cunningham, who is very, has several large areas, including the Carolinas, has bought Mr. West's area at this time. Funding, again, for this project is through the Community Park and Playground Grant, $250,000. This is a non-managing grant, so we do not have to put any city money into that. And the recommendation would be, after reviewed by the city and staff, and Mr. Manzi has recommended that the mayor and city council award the playground replacement contract to Game Time and Cunningham Recreation for $234,982.32. The leftover money will be, they will allow us, Community Park and Playground, to, to do the erosion improvements down by the playground.
Counsel, questions?
This is where the existing playground is now?
That, that's a drawing of the new playground, just the bird's eye view.
But the area will be the same?
Will be the same area with the exception of bumping out for that play structure just a little bit.
The shade trees that are there now?
Should not be affected.
So the green grass and the other trees, we're going to add some trees?
We could, we could add some trees down there. I'm mainly concerned with trying to get the water that runs off the hill coming from the pavilion area to channel that away from the playground and.
That area. Because all the parents always ask, because they all flock to that area because of the shade.
Right, right.
So it's much appreciated. Thank you.
Mr. Lottsky, with all the root structure in that particular area, do they think that that's going to be, that the root structure is going to be bothered at all by the application?
Well, they're not going any further up the hill, if you will, with the, with the structure, so they'll be removing the existing border timbers, the existing structure as it is now, and just putting everything right on top of the same, same earth, so I don't believe any of the root structures will be affected.
Mr. Les?
Pardon me? How many benches are there?
I'm not sure, how much does it show on the screen?
I think any pit, all I'm suggesting is pay attention to that, because what I've noticed when we've had our grandson over there, there's not enough bench spaces for grandparents like me. Okay?
Aren't you supposed to be playing with your grandchild over there?
He does the climbing, I watch. But again, there's a lot of, like you said, there's a lot of children over there playing.
Right.
And I, you know, if you get, two benches may not be enough, you may want to put one, you know, three or four more places around.
Yeah, Mr. Les, I'm seeing four, but we can certainly.
Yeah, take a look at that, Mike.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Nicholas, anything?
No.
Mr. Smalls?
Mr. Lottsky, the equipment that's coming out, is any of that usable, and if so, what happens to it?
Generally, when it's removed, we can't guarantee that it's going to be in any kind of shape or if it's going to meet the ADA and the entrapment playground regulations right now. In the past, we've given swing, you know, swing set away, you know, that type of thing, but I'm not sure that this would be a benefit to anybody, and legally also.
Okay. Doesn't the city have some type of a, a program where it works cooperatively with homeowner associations and that sort of thing in the area of recreation?
Yes, there is, there's a, I think there's a grant program that HOA comes before the city and asks for some assistance, there's a grant that they can apply for for playground equipment, yes, sir.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Lottsky, this will be on our agenda as well.
Mike, they're going to do all the, they're going to do all of the install, correct?
That's correct.
They do certify that for us.
Yes, they do, yeah.
That's correct. Okay, right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and this is item number six, ordinance to amend the operating budget of the mayor and city council of Laurel for the fiscal year 2016. Ms. Taylor?
Mr. President, this is our first amendment to the operating side of the budget. On page two, you'll see the, an addition of $2,490. These are funds collected by Parks and Recreation through the cooperative agreement of the organizations that use our athletic fields, and they make a contribution, so now we're bringing that money into the budget in order to fund Mr. Lottsky's purchase of soil and seed to reseed and reggrass the fields over the winter. The next line, the $23,660, is in addition to the other miscellaneous revenues, those are funds that are being added also through the development impact fees, the fall plantings done by Parks and Recreation and Public Works, we're using $5,220 of those funds, so again, we bring those into the budget, the invoices are paid from Parks and Recreation ground maintenance budget. So that's a total increase to the budget of $26,150. The other addition is a $12,000 to the police department. The city was partially reimbursed for the expenditures we incurred during our assistance to the Baltimore City Police and the Maryland State Police. The chief had brought to you the recommendation earlier to award the contract for the video storage from the body wear cameras, so this will pay for that as well. And the other addition to the vehicle maintenance budget of $6,440 was also part of that Baltimore City reimbursement, from which we were able to purchase a replacement jet. City reimbursement, from which we were able to purchase a replacement generator for the mobile crime lab.
Questions from the council? Mr. Smalls?
No.
Ms. Nicholas? Mr... Ms. Querry? Mr. Lys?
I'm fine.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Item number seven, it's an ordinance to amend the capital improvements program. Ms. Taylor, I'm sorry to call you back.
That's okay, Mr. President. This is an addition of the park improvement project to the FY16 CIP, just to recognize the $250,000 grant that Mr. Latsky applied for and was awarded for this playground replacement.
Go ahead, Ms. Taylor.
I just want to take this time to inform you, after you received this document that was brought to our attention, that the Tricaster and the cable studio cannot be repaired. It needs to be replaced. And Mrs. Barnes, if you have questions for her about that purchase, there are currently funds in the Laurel Cable renovation budget in the CIP that can be used to make this purchase. She's still getting quotes, working with Mr. Frost to meet with vendors. So before this is actually introduced, this ordinance could change to further replenish the project from the PEG funds. Those were all PEG funds from the cable subscriptions.
Switches need to be...
Right.
It's about 24 grand? Is that a yes, or is that a...
No, I mean, it'll be your product. It's going to be in 2030s.
Is that a Tricaster? Is that what you call it?
It's a switch for the cameras. Audrey can probably... It basically runs all this stuff.
The switcher is the... It's the main piece of equipment that you need for live broadcasts. For example, in the council chamber, there are five cameras, and with the switcher, we can switch between different cameras, take different camera views.
Right, right.
If you've noticed the shows lately, we only have one camera shot. That's because we no longer have a switcher that works. So we're not able to take various cameras. We can't do any graphics. We have no ability to wipe or transition between shots. The Tricaster's only been in production since 2005, and ours is a 2007 model, which is a dinosaur in when it comes to technology. And the parts just don't exist anymore. Can't be repaired. It has to be replaced. And as we move forward, trying to get an HD channel for Laurel TV, this is just a good time to replace it and get something, an all-in-one piece of equipment that can not only do the live broadcast for all the council and government meetings, but for Laurel TV and beyond.
So still 24 to 30 grand?
Yes.
He's got... IT's got you well-trained. It's a dinosaur. I think it actually looks pretty good when I'm watching it at home for $30,000. But we're going to take care of the switch so that we've got the cameras working.
All right. It is Christmas.
We'll buy the new one, and it'll be a dinosaur by the time you install it anyways.
That's right. Mr. Lys? Mr. Nicholas? Mr. Smalls?
I'm fine with this, but for any of us who have been around and watched the dinosaur in action, one camera angle. We did that for years.
Okay. Ms. Nick... I mean, Ms. Taylor.
I just wanted to repeat that these are not tax dollars that fund these items. These are coming from the cable subscriptions that we use to purchase equipment for the cable studio.
Very important point. Thank you.
I just also wanted to respectfully request that you possibly suspend the rules to adopt the CIP ordinance only, because you'll be awarding, hopefully, the contract for the playground, and it would just stand in good order to come before.
Put this and the playground?
I'm sorry.
Right. Okay, thank you. Counsel, okay with that? Okay. All right, thank you. Is there anything else to come forward to council? Mayor?
I just want to remind everyone that the city's holiday illumination and parade is this Saturday, December the 5th, at 5:30. If you're going to take part in the parade, they start up and line up here, right?
Line up at 5:00.
Oops, line up at 5:00. Parade goes off at 5:30, and then we'll do the tree lighting. I want to remind everyone that maybe watching, or those council members, as they talk to people, a lot of things going on in the world today, and I just want to remind everyone, we need to prepare. We need to make sure our community is prepared and that they understand the measures they should take if something were to occur, whether man-made or natural disaster. And we want to remind everyone that if you see something and you have to second-guess yourself, pick up the phone, call the police if that's the case. That's what their police department's here for. If you have any businesses... I know the chief and them are moving forward with meeting many of the business communities, but we want to encourage them as well. If they have questions or they need some guidance when we talk about emergency services or police protection or prevention, they can call our police department. So thank you very much.